Right, yep, four.
Give me one second while I connect to YouTube, okay?
Oh, you're not connected yet?
No, I'm giving two seconds.
Okay. Let me know when I have the green light.
I will. We're still loading.
Okay. Still loading?
Yeah, I'm having some issues with it. It's saying it's unable to livestream to custom service. I'm not sure why it's saying that. And I'm the only one on for tonight.
So India, is the attendees part working?
There's no attendees at this moment.
I know, but is that working? Can someone get in as an attendee? Because you're saying the video part, the YouTube video stream is working.
Right, yeah, they can get in under Zoom under the attendee.
I mean, it's got to be recorded and put out there, so.
Yeah, we're recording right now on Zoom, but I just have, I can't do the YouTube feed.
All right, I mean, that's, I think, having the option on Zoom, not Zoom, but YouTube is another option for the public. But I mean, it's available to the public right now if they went through to sign it in. So I feel comfortable, you guys all agree, to go ahead. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd just like to note that we have our deputy finance director, Sharon, who is with us. I know Nancy is going to be part of this meeting. She is currently on the building committee meeting for the library, so she'll be on in a few. So what I'll do, I'll go into business, and just want to remind everyone, I did say before, but this is a special meeting. So we do have to discuss items that's currently on the agenda. But what I would do during discussion, we could bring up anything that we can plan to bring up at the next meeting. And so I'll leave that open for during discussion. Hello, Nancy. Welcome. So right into business, the first item, discussion and status update from the town manager on the current process for the hiring of the new finance director. I think this is important. Robert, let me unmute you before I... India, do I have, I don't think I have the ability to unmute anyone.
I was able to do it.
India, can you make me co-host, please?
Yes.
Yeah, Robert, I just want to say before you start, I think, I think this is important for us to, you know, move ahead in finding our next finance director. I just want to commend the team, the finance team, for the job that they're doing. I think they have held it together, but we definitely do need our finance director. So I think that's important. Everyone is trying to pick up, you know, extra load. And we all understand that in addition to going through an audit, I firsthand know how demanding that could be with your day-to-day work. So I think it's important. That's the reason why this item is on the agenda, so we can get an actual update on the process and the timeline. So go ahead, Robert.
Thank you, Chair Curtin. We initially began a solicitation for the position on June the 25th. That solicitation ran from the 25th to July the 16th. The respondents in that solicitation, we didn't have a large enough pool that we felt we wanted to go to interview with. We offered another solicitation from July the 29th through August the 19th, and collected a few more applicants. Overall, the applicant pool, we had 38 responses for the position. Out of the 38 responses, one person was a resident of Bloomfield. And out of the 38 responses, we had five qualified candidates that met the requirements for the position. So with those five qualified candidates, they will be going through oral board examinations in front of a panel of finance directors that have been selected from local government in our area. Those three finance directors will be asking professional, experiential questions of the five qualified candidates. That is going to occur on September 3rd. Shortly after that, once those boards are completed, we'll begin interviews of candidates the week of September 14. We anticipate being able to make a selection out of the pool that we have. And an offer would be made within two to four weeks of those interviews occurring September 14. So we would anticipate securing an offer and having someone able to onboard within the month of October. We would expect those professionals, if they're currently working, to need two to four weeks of notice to give to their employers. If they don't need that personally in order to be able to make arrangements to take the position. So we're pleased with the size of the applicant pool that we were able to assemble. Five qualified applicants was a little bit small, but it was enough for us to work with. And with the oral boards and the in-person interviews that'll occur mid-September, we're confident we'll have a candidate available in October.
And I have a question in regards to the 38 applicants that applied. And you said only five out of the 38 was qualified. That tells me that, A, people just respond to stuff, or shouldn't that have filtered out through on certain requirements that's outlined in that post-in? I mean, I wouldn't apply to something if I'm not... So I'm just trying to get a sense of what was...
The postings are very clear in terms of the requirements for the position. And there's really no control over what individuals are going to submit and what their backgrounds are. And you do generally get a healthy dose of folks who may not be qualified, but they're hopeful that they would be considered. But from what Cindy's been able to collect, we do have additional information related to gender and race and disability and all that. I just don't have it in front of me here. But we do, we have collected all that information from the applicant pool. And if there's interest in further information regarding diversity, as well as where we're placing these solicitations to try and ensure that we're getting, you know, a broad coverage of professionals, we can provide that as well.
Yeah, I think that's something that I will bring up in admin education committee meeting next month if it's a question. But I don't think we have to discuss it here. Patrick, you have your hands up. One second. Yep, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Robert, I just had one question for you. So you said that one applicant was a resident of Bloomfield. Is that applicant one of the five who have met the requirements or not?
I don't, I don't have that detail, Patrick. We can provide that to you. I asked for a strategic reporting that would give me an overall summary to be able to give you a feel. Cindy is running the, you know, the diversity and ethnicity information, and we can get that all to you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That's okay. Is there any other questions from the committee members on this? Anyone? Okay. Moving on to the next item, discussion of the SAS audit letter to the town. This is basically the statement of audit and standards, and Nancy will go into this. I think everyone received that letter from Bloom Shapiro, had a chance to review it. It's pretty standard and the guidelines of their audit. So, but I'll just let Stanley, it's part of the requirement for us, this engagement letter, to come to the council committee to acknowledge that we receive it so they can start their work. But I'll let Nancy go ahead and just give us an overview.
Thank you, Councilor Curtin. Yes, it is just an advisory letter from our auditors. They did send an engagement letter and started preliminary work back in June. They are required, under accounting standards, to notify you with the council because technically you were their client, that they are beginning their work, and they've outlined some strategic dates that they hope to be doing them. As in the past, we do anticipate that they will come back after the audit has been completed. Usually it's December, January timeframe, and give you an update on their audit. There are also, if you will know, in their letter, it's third or fourth page in, they do give the names, email addresses, and phone numbers of the people who are assigned to them. So if you do have any areas of concern or areas you would like them to look into, please feel free to reach out to them. And, you know, Chair Curtin pretty much described what it is. This is pro forma. But, you know, pro forma doesn't mean that there shouldn't be any interaction, if that's what...
And what I had mentioned to Nancy, and I spoke today about this, if any member from the committee have questions, just funnel it through to myself and Nancy. We'll get to the auditors, and we'll get back to you with response. You'll make it easy that way. Any, want to have any questions pertaining to that? Councilor Goff, one second.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just one quick question. I read through the letter. And I just want to verify with Nancy that I don't think there's any, we're instituting any new accounting standards this year that's really affected the town. I, you know, reading the, you know, my recollection wasn't, there weren't any anyway. And then reading the letter, it notes that because of COVID, you know, the gas has pushed these out of here anyway. So I just, I just want to confirm that. I'm not expecting any changes.
I don't expect there to be any either.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that question. Any other question on this? Councilor Lorenzo? Here is what I'm going to do. If you're on mute, if I unmute you, just stay that way. Don't mute yourself. It's difficult to get in and out. Just kind of let me know when you're ready to say something. It's just making it very difficult to...
Okay.
All right, Councilor Lorenzo.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Nancy, I, you know, reading through the letter, I didn't notice it, but if I missed it, maybe you would know. Are we having the account, the auditors, look at the Board of Education at all? Is part of this audit?
Well, well, I know. Nancy, one second.
I mean, this is their standard letter, which we've seen many times.
Yes, the Board of Education is always part of the annual audit, as well as the state and federal single audit, which accompany the financial report. So yes, they are included.
Right, but didn't we, didn't we ask for additional detail for Board of Ed, like to go back a couple of years or something? I can't remember if that was supposed to be this audit or...
That was not part of this audit.
It was not part of this audit, okay.
Councilor Goff?
Yeah, actually, I'm at the same place Councilor Lorenzo is. And I mean, my recollection, and I didn't see in the letter, although that didn't surprise me. I think we have, we are doing a separate control risk assessment of both the town and the Board of Ed. And that, my recollection was it's an additional piece.
Well...
As opposed to, because the Board of Ed does their own audit.
Correct, they're actually going through an audit right now.
Right.
Yeah.
No, this is part, the Board of Ed is part of this audit that this letter covers. There is a separate engagement with the shared service study. And I thought that there was something else that they began last year, maybe, that was unrelated to this. This is very specific as to what's required under the state statute with regard to municipal audits, which include Boards of Education.
And Nancy, too, because I also re-collect that. So this could be one of those questions that we send to them just to get some clarification.
Yeah.
In regards to the depth of work that they're going to be doing with the Board of Ed.
Yeah.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions from anyone on the audit? All right, review of the July financials. And Nancy, if you can, before you review, if you can give the committee just a little insight to what's currently going on with the department, where the workload is shifted, and you just give us some sense of, you know, what are some of the challenges and opportunities in the meantime as we go through to bring someone in? Just so we can get a sense to manage when it comes to questions and so on. And this is one of the reasons why I wasn't overly excited to get a meeting going, to give you folks an opportunity to kind of get your sea legs, because I could just imagine everything that's going on. So if you can give the committee just a sense of what's going on with the change of Carrie not being here and some of the challenges that you do see.
Sure. After Carrie's departure, we essentially, you know, there's five divisions in finance. The assessment division is reporting directly to the town manager. The rest of the department was essentially split between Sharon Gentiles Harris and I. Sharon is overseeing the tax office revenues, as well as the audit, she's learning the audit, and things like the pension and bank reconciliations. And I will oversee, am overseeing IT, health insurance, as well as the monthly reporting to the town council. If there's something that doesn't fall neatly into one of those buckets, and we also have retained the services of ATTEM, who is coordinating all of the audit activities on the town's behalf, and also training Sharon to be able to absorb those duties next year, so she'll be able to handle them. If there's something that doesn't fall neatly into any one of those buckets, Sharon and I speak several times a day, and we kind of figure out which one of us is going to oversee it or do it, and it gets taken care of. You know, I'll let Sharon speak for herself. But we seem to think that it's working so far. It's been working well. I, oh, I'm sorry, I oversee the budget, too. How did I miss that? It's the biggest thing of all.
Anything out.
$94 million item, I missed it. But Sharon and I have, you know, we do confer several times daily. And, you know, while it is an additional workload for both of us, I personally have not heard any complaints about, from departments, about things not getting done or getting complaints about things not being resolved or handled in a timely basis for whatever that's worth. And we usually have a pretty vocal staff that would complain to us if that were the case. So I think so far, we're managing to hold down the fort until we get a new finance director. Unless, you know, Sharon may have a different view of things, but I'll let her speak for herself.
Sharon?
I totally agree with Nancy. We communicate and we divide up the work. And we have a good handle on it. There are some things that come up where multiple priorities are conflict. But we work through them. And we also meet regular with the temp to make sure things are on track to meet the deadline when they come in next week. And so I think we have a pretty good handle on that, plus other things outside the scope that may pop up. So I totally agree with Nancy.
Awesome. I mean, this is a great testament. So I can tell you when Jim Ren left, Carrie easily transitioned into that role. And I think what's important is having a good system in place. Processes and procedure in any finance department is key. And it's clearly an example of what's going on here. So I just want to thank you all for the work that you're doing from the committee and the council, on behalf of the committee and the council. So we're going to go into the next item, the review of the July 2020 financials. And if you could, I have a copy, but if you could put it up for this, on the screen, if Nancy, you there?
Oh, do you want me to put it up?
Yeah, I don't have, yeah.
Do you have it handy, India? I mean, I could look it up, but...
It was in our packet. I have it on my phone, but...
Yeah, I mean, there's no one looking. I have a copy of it. I just wanted to make sure that it's visible for the public if there's anyone watching, so.
Chair, I can share that with you if you'd like.
Please, please do.
I was gonna say, I could do it, too.
Is that large enough?
Yeah.
Yeah, Nancy, go ahead, please.
Okay, um, basically, surprisingly, I think the summary that I would want to leave you with is that the town is basically trending the same way as we were a year ago. And I think that that's fairly good news. Expenditures are 8.2% of the budget. As of last year, they were 8.5% of the budget through July. Revenues are at 47.4% compared to 48.3% from last year. I think the biggest surprise, at least to me, was the tax revenue for July, which I think we probably, at least from my perspective, thought that was going to be trending downward due to COVID. And surprisingly, it's basically the same as it was last year. The collection rate is, you know, actually a little bit higher than it was last year. So that was very, very surprising. The areas I think that we need to keep an eye on for revenues would be the, because we do anticipate that we're going to continue to get state revenues. I would just want to keep a close eye on the interest on investments, given the current interest rate. Even though Carrie had taken it down in her projections and in your adopted budget, the revenue had been taken down. It's still an area that warrant some close watching, as well as miscellaneous receipts. I think that one might be a struggle to reach primarily because we had two large one-time revenue sources that contributed to that last year. And the third largest one was about $40,000 less this year than it was last year. So on the revenue side, you know, I'm a little bit cautious about that. I did take, surprisingly, though, I took a look at the real estate conveyance tax again. We're really knocking it out of the park through August. Although we're not finished with August, we're at like 47% collection of what the projected projection was. So there's a nice little surprise there as we go forward. But overall, I don't see anything in terms of the revenues right now that are going to have a negative impact on the town. And from the expenditure side, our expenditures do look pretty much in line with last year. We make our large one-time, large payments in July. They also, which this year included the MDC, the quarterly MDC payment, as well as the debt service payment for the 2017 refunding. And our, obviously, our expenditures do show a percentage that are encumbrances, which, as you know, are obligations that we will be paying sometime. But I think that we're doing well on them. We will be reassessing the potential savings that you'll recall in the budget, that there was $380,000 that the town had to come up with in payroll savings to meet your budget request. We really haven't taken the projections beyond the first quarter because of the positions that are out, and most of them, I believe, have closed now, with the exception of the police positions, which are frozen. So we'll reassess where we are after we've completed those recruitments and actually retained somebody.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right, Robert, can you please take the screen away? Okay, I guess I'm not overly surprised, as, to be honest, because I believe that future months is when we're going to really feel the impact, especially, obviously, you know, with the state and federal government, with the stimulus that infuse into the economy, I think, really helped with, you know, folks being able to continue making payments and so on. But I could see future months being challenging. I mean, let's cross our fingers, but I think that's part of, that's part of the factor when you look at where we are right now. We're not really going to see, we're really early into the pandemic. From that standpoint, I've seen real impact in the economy of how it affects everyone, businesses, and our taxpayers in town. Sharon, you have a question?
I just wanted to reiterate something that Nancy mentioned on the interest rate. With the low rates, I've been getting calls, because TIF is down, I think, to 0.11. Some of the banks are lowering their interest rates, including the bank where we hold most of our tax receipts. And we also have some short-term CDs that were staggered. As those are being renewed, they're struggling to find anything above maybe 0.2%, where they were close to one or above. So that's really something we have to look at.
Got you. Thanks for that. Any questions on the financials? Councilor Goff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I got a couple of things, just looking at them. First of all, going back to the Board of Ed for a couple of things. Board of Ed, just can you guys confirm that the Board of Ed is out on Munis? And that in the finance area, you can actually see the Board of Ed in real time in terms of their financial transactions?
No, they're not totally on Munis yet. I think that they've delayed their start date. I think payroll was not scheduled to begin with anyway until after the calendar year. They're not up fully, unless Sharon, I don't know if you know any different, but I don't believe they're fully up yet.
No, I think AP was delayed until, I think, September. And as you mentioned, payroll is starting in January, since that follows more a calendar year process. There will be some issues that we have to work out in identifying differences between accountants for BOE and us. So that's something we have to look at as they come live.
Okay, so, I mean, Mr. Chair, can you put that on, you know?
Yeah.
A fuller report on that next time and more of an idea, because, you know, one of the things with making the July 1st deadline, I thought, was that, you know, it's going to be the split of the fiscal year, and we were going to be able to get real-time numbers on that. So just more detail that I know everyone's doing all they can.
Yeah, that's a good point, that's a good point. But I could see what being the challenge with, obviously, we're all going through the same thing, pandemic not being around.
Oh, sure.
That's a big factor, so.
No, I'm not, I just want to update in terms of what's going on. Because that was, you know, that's the big advantage, is that we actually can see that in real time rather than, rather than always getting sort of a, well, they're on budget, and at the end of the year, we don't know. The other thing with the Board of Ed, and I have not gone back out to the Board of Ed website, but I did check a few weeks ago. Have we received a, and I know this changes daily, and it's probably changed since they've come up hybrid plan. But once they, you know, once the budget was finalized, and they, they did, I think at their July meeting, approved a budget. Have we got a copy of the reclass budget so that we know, you know, we can, we can look at least the major line items for the Board of Ed as it's been reclassed? Do we have that at this point?
I have not gotten it. I'll reach out to the Board to see if...
Because if we, if we could get... Good, because if we, if we could get that and send it out to at least all the finance committee members. Because I, you know, a lot of times I don't see that until the following year. And I, I think it's, I, I would like to see what they did, although I think we all realize that it is a constantly changing item. Um, I had two, two other questions on sort of the fees and, and, um, a set, well, fees and, and things like that. You mentioned the real estate conveyance fees that that was up. Was part of that because of the sale of that Britain Drive property? I mean, were, were there a couple of big, big sales that?
I, that's a good question. In July, there was a very, a very big one. I didn't research the August ones. You know, I did that today, but I mean, it was, so I'm anticipating there was at least another large transfer of property to have it go up that much.
Okay, and I, and I know one thing we, I didn't add, I, I, you know, it occurred to me while you were talking about this and I don't think we, uh, well, when we, when we looked at the budget, the budget revisions, I think we were, we were so concerned with the expenses. Um, we have the fee income. How is the SIG, you know, we gave, uh, we gave Cigna an abatement for their, for the revisions of their office space?
Yes.
I have no idea. I, I would, I don't know if they've sped those up because they don't have people working in the building and it, you know, it's a good time to renovate, or they've slowed that all down. So, and you probably don't know the answer to this tonight, but perhaps for next meeting. Understanding what's built into the budget and what's, what they're actually doing, whether it's going to be on you know, if it's in the budget, is it going to be on schedule with what we thought before? Uh, or if it's, you know, just understanding that. Because there were, there were significant building fees for the three, I think they were doing it three years in a row. And there were significant building fees billed in when we gave them the abatements.
I know there was a large, a large permit from last year. I don't know that encompassed the additional work for the other years. Um, we have not got, I looked at that again today as well, and it doesn't look like we've gotten any other larger fees. But, um, I'll, I'll look into that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Any more questions for Nancy on the finance, Councilor De Lorenzo? There you go. One second, yep.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just by way of Cigna, uh, Councilor Goff, I do, you know, since I do work there, although I haven't worked in the office since March and, uh, not planning to go back. But I have heard and I do know that they're continuing to do the construction and the, um, you know, updating of our office space. So we were in, when I left in March, I had just actually moved to my new space in February. So, uh, the space that I had been in was going to be next as part of phase two. And I know they're continuing, they've, they've been working on phase two and that work is progressing. I don't know if, you know, phase two is slightly delayed or not, but I know that the, uh, construction crews are in the building and they continue to work. Uh, so my question was around, I, I too, Nancy was, and Sharon was happy to see the, um, tax collection rate, you know, be close to or a little bit higher than it was last year. So I was just wondering, based on the, um, items that the council approved for, for our residents to take advantage of due to COVID nineteen, the delay and deferred tax payments and so forth. Do you know or do you have a number of what we're anticipating will be delayed? Because it obviously didn't happen in the first part of the year. Uh, so I'm just wondering if you know, would know where we are with that and how many people have actually submitted a request to defer?
I think there were a little over a hundred people that had requested to defer.
That's correct.
I don't know the, the monetary implication of those hundred people.
Okay.
I see town manager as his hand raised, so maybe.
Yeah, one second.
Yeah, it was, um, roughly three hundred and fifty thousand that was deferred across the two programs. And, uh, Nancy hit the nail on the head. It was like a hundred and six or a hundred and nine property owners that took advantage of the, the two programs.
Are these all, um, uh, businesses or property owners? Uh, I mean, you said a hundred, so it seems a larger amount.
I did not get a division on, or corporate versus, uh, you know, residential or anything like that. I just got the number of participants and the amount of, uh, uh, funding that was deferred, uh, through the, I think it was, was it two months?
I think it's through October, right?
Three.
Yeah, three months.
Three months.
Would you be able to get that breakout, Robert, for us?
Yeah, um, I, I sent a really simple, simplified one out a couple of weeks back. Uh, but, um, I can get some more detail put into that report and shoot it back out to you guys.
Okay, one second. Thank you. The mayor has her hands up. Trying to unmute you, yep.
Yeah, I was just going to say the same thing as, um, Councilor De Lorenzo. I was very happy to see the tax, uh, collection. But I was also gonna, I know that we had a discussion about our financial position. So I was trying to get the information about the deferred tax payment as well. Um, but is Robert going to be able to provide for us the difference between the businesses and the residential taxes? I think that would be helpful for us in other dis, in, then other discussions that we are having. Um, and how our financial outlook is looking. Um, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there, Counselor Politis, you have any questions on, on any items? I didn't hear from you.
I actually do not.
Okay, awesome. Okay, alright, so that's it. What I'm going to do, is there any public comments, Cindy? I know I don't see anyone from the public. Yeah, one second, Councilor Goff. I don't see anyone, so I will go to Councilor Goff.
Yeah, um, actually, I, I assume you can still see me even though I can't see you because I just pulled up my screen. Uh, while, while we were talking, I went back to, in our July, July, uh, two thousand nineteen meeting, the Finance Committee recommended a three-year look back for the control risk assessment for the town and the Board of Education as part of this year's audit. So that's, that's what's going on. As I said, it's the control risk assessment part of, of, of the whole.
If I could, I actually, thank you, Kevin, for reminding me. That was one of those things, I think, in some of the, the transmission kind of got, um, lost in my mind. Um, they did do a preliminary. They, they've not completed it. I don't know if it's been finalized. Um, but they had done, um, I'm not sure where the Board of Ed part stuff is. They did it for the town as well as for the board. Um, it wasn't both of us, as I recall. And I'll have to follow up with Bloom Shapiro was another division, not the auditors that normally do our independent audit, to see if it's been finalized or if they, um, where they are on that. So thank you for reminding me.
So, uh, Nancy, I'll probably reach out to you tomorrow, see if we could get some, I have, uh, pointed out some of the questions that came up tonight.
Okay.
If we could get a, um, email to them and get a response back will be helpful. Alright, so there's no public comments, but there's no one from the public on the call. So what I will do, since this is a special meeting, is just get a feedback from the committee on if there's any items that you would like to see on the, the next, um, agenda. The one thing I could think of, and Nancy and I spoke about this today, it's regards to, obviously, you all know that the library building committee is up and running. And they're going through a process right now. And I think it'll be good if we can get something, probably, we talked about October, November, Nancy, on our debt service and our position where we are. It'll be a bit pretty helpful because I can tell you sitting into Patrick De Lorenzo uh, meeting for golf, they're talking about some capital improvement projects and, you know, there's things that are going on all over the place. So we want to kind of get a sense of what are some of the major things that potentially can, uh, we look forward to in the future regards to projects and investments and so on within the town. So we can get another outlook and where we would be, especially talking about the library. We, a few years ago, we talked about twenty twenty-three will be that point where we can go out and borrow money for that project. And we're talking about next year for referendum for the, the library. So that will be good to get something in front of us, uh, by November or so, to get a sense of where things are. Right, Nancy?
Yes, that would be great. Um, it's good timing. It also positions you, um, right before the budget season starts. So, um, you know, that's helpful information to have as you're developing your budget for twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, but I want to hear from the committee, any comments, uh, in regards to future planning, um, you know, for the, the town and, and for this committee and the council. Because I think it's important for us to be forward-thinking. I kind of had a sense to look at a couple of the briefly review Robert's email, and I'm happy to see, uh, a lot of this stuff that was outlined in your memo are things that we discussed during the budget session in regards to how we need to look at a five-year plan and outlook of how things are. So that's, that's pretty good. And I think we need to start doing some work within this committee to kind of look at some of those projections and see with the finance department of where we're going to be in, in five years. I think it's important. So I just want to hear from the committee before we go. This is your opportunity to give me a sense of what you would like to see in, in the next month and what we can talk about. Uh, Councilor Goff, you have your hands up and I'll go to Councilor De Lorenzo.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, just real, real quickly, and we mentioned that this came up at, um, some of the discussions we've had recently comparing wages of various departments. Uh, I would like to, to do, I would like to see the committee, uh, or the Finance Department of the town, and I realize, you know, they have lots of work right now. But I would like to see a more thorough comparison of Bloomfield with some of our surrounding towns and try to understand what exactly is driving the differences. And I recognize, you know, one of the problems we had before was comparability that, that's always going to be a little bit of a problem. But with the work that Robert and the team, you know, with the town manager and the finance team did last spring, uh, or this spring to do, to, to take the benefits and put them in with the, uh, salaries and so forth. Um, we now sort of are poised that we can compare to towns with sound, with that, you know, with the benefits all-inclusive in the departments or not. So I, that's one thing I would like to see. I think that's going to involve some work. Um, so I just point that out to the finance, uh, finance department. Thanks.
Right, uh, Councilor De Lorenzo?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think you touched on it in your remarks a little bit earlier. But, you know, again, the golf committee, uh, we do have an item for them to come back. They are going to go out and get a assessment done of the, so they're going out with an RFI to get an assessment of the irrigation system. And, uh, that will be, you know, maybe up to five thousand, I think we said was the, the limit on that. Uh, so, once they get that approved, they were going to come back to finance. But then, you know, we, we need to plan ahead for not only the irrigation system, which I guess could cost upwards of a million dollars, uh, because they would need new pumping systems and, you know, the pump house and whatever. So a lot of those mechanical things would have to be replaced. And then in addition, we have a lot of equipment that's been recommended. Uh, for example, one of the things that we, we've never had for the golf course was the sand top dresser. And, um, that was one of the items that was recommended in the report, uh, coming out of, um, uh, back in July when we had another assessment done. So those things will have to be considered. I, I'm not sure about the cost, but the committee is going to be coming back to us, uh, under Dave Malesco, uh, leading it. They'll come back and give us some numbers and some priorities and things like that. But definitely those things I would like to get us on the financial, on the agenda for finance.
Counselor Politis?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I think, I think the, one of the things that I think we should be looking at too is, um, maybe get a reassessment from departments about the CIP, because we've pushed off everything um, this year. And maybe try to get a reassessment of what we pushed off and how important that is. And maybe some other stuff that may be coming up and try to get a jump on, uh, some of the CIP projects and where, where we're looking at going into next budget season and try to get a, you know, maybe try to get ahead of that a little bit.
Good point. Mayor, any questions from you?
And I think I might, I think I might be on the other side of the spectrum or, um, is, is getting some guidelines for the next budget system, uh, budget season and trying to do that early. Um, realizing that we still have to assess where we are with COVID and the effects of COVID nineteen. We have to reassess where we are with the schools and what their needs are going to be because of COVID nineteen. And the fact that, once again, I don't think anyone's coming to save us but ourselves. So I would like to see those guidelines, um, for the budget, for us to be able to sit down and talk about that, um, rather, sooner rather than later. Also, a, um, a good communication system. And not the communication system for the police, but a communication system for our residents. One of the things that we learned, uh, during the storm, that it was a little bit difficult to communicate with all the residents. So I know that it wasn't a part of our initial, um, budget talks, but I think it needs to be something that we look at. So it's, it's just those things, the fact that we are going into winter, um, and, and we might have future storms or future disruptions, things like that. So getting ready for the budget, um, making those budgetary, uh, projections and giving guidelines and trying to figure out how to get a communication system that we can communicate with our residents better.
Good point.
And one, um, one, I'm sorry, one, one other thing. I know that there was a lot of residents looking for help from the town. And we did not have a mechanism to help them on a financial level besides the, um, deferment of taxes and things like that. And there are still people looking for the town to help to, to get some of the debris off of their property or help them to dispose of the debris. So maybe looking at some things like that as well.
Got you. Thank you. Nancy?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that as part of the, um, the, one of the items that we were able to get reimbursed under FEMA, um, at the end of last, uh, the end of fiscal years, we did purchase software where we could do the, um, text residence, like a community, um, texting platform. I don't believe it's been rolled out yet. Um, the Lieutenant Ben Venuto is, is heading up that effort. It's not a reverse nine-one-one, but it is a mechanism that we can send texts for a variety of different um, platforms, programs. It can be used for leisure services, senior services, town-wide, um, stuff. So I did want to let you know that that had been purchased. And, um, although it's not operational yet, it is a mechanism for the town to be able to communicate with the public who may not have access to either, uh, you know, the town's website or one of the other ways that we tend to communicate with people.
And, and that's important, Nancy, because I, I discovered a lot of the folks during the storm didn't have, obviously didn't have electricity, no internet cable and so on. So their only means of communications were through their phones and, uh, you know, their devices. So they were able to go online and try to find information. So having that ability to text something to residents, I think, will be another means of getting that communication out. So I think that's important. Is there anything that you want to share with, uh, the committee and Nancy on anything that we should look forward to? Or any?
I'm good.
You're good for now? Okay, perfect. So with that being said, I don't have any, any other comments. Uh, anything else from the committee before we adjourn? Nope, here and none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No, no. No, no.
Okay, I have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Meeting adjourned. Have a wonderful evening, everyone.
Thanks.
You too. Everybody.